...in order of that to disagree with you. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, as a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. All right.
Oh.
Roxanne.
Is there a permit here?
I'm like three minutes.
Oh, yes.
We have minutes for A11 and A21. Everybody can stand a little forward. Any change in the debate? Just motion to approve minutes at present.
Oh, there's a motion to approve minutes for A11 and we thought of A21.
All in favor? All right. The next thing we have is the equipment. Equipment used rental, my address. Um, maybe I want to see what this is? This is from rent control or is it correct? What's that?
One that rents into the highway.
So we are renting this?
No, we can see the dates on there, it's in, what, next week that we've got there.
Okay.
For a two week period.
And what we're renting from them?
Is it the term?
Yes, yes.
So, Zimlon DX 100 dummy with coupleer. None of that, why not? Why not?
Chase, just so that we know, I know my ex with the um, C L I and um, my ex and then working together to get, make sure that they put this listed on the C L I.
So can, what we need to do here, is it when signed, any agreement?
Yes.
And for the more?
Yes, that's what Kim said, yes.
Okay. There is four thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars.
That's the rental, how long is that for?
Two weeks. Well, it's the week the rent, no, yeah, the week. That will hold me, my bad. From nine twenty-two till nine twenty-nine.
Any more promotion?
Yeah.
Oh, a big promotion that we accept the rental contract.
That's good.
All right, all in favor?
Do we just initial?
Oh, all right, bye. All right, we're reaching this.
Um, so at our last meeting, we said that we had to come up with more and uh, and our events. So, we have a rec meeting on September third. We have a children's charter cook-off on September twenty-seventh. We have a Halloween party of some sort on October twenty-fifth. We're doing a craft fair on November first, but then we have the school. Um, our Christmas party will be summer thirteen. And next year for our home touch event, we're going to do August twenty-first, twenty forty-six.
So, right now, so we, I've reached out to our legal department to get policy on how we're going to work that and move forward. And we're going to pop the, transfer a little bit more, no? Really ready?
Oh, it was um, that we have, we actually have a take, if they'd like to, to make their take back.
They can. All right. So, I think until we hear back from legal, we're just gonna move forward as is.
Well, I mean, for our next few things, we don't need any of the vehicles or any container.
Right.
We're not using any of the wreck people basically, so.
You mean move forward with the event without having to worry about. What's the next one where you're gonna have?
Our, well, I mean, we don't have anything absolute date for except for the local permit for next year. So, this is just the children's charter cook-off and Halloween, Christmas.
And those are all the first. And?
Depending what we do, we're discussing more on the third.
Fire truck for the Santa, right?
Well, we too had a Santa ride.
Santa ride.
Yeah.
So, hopefully it was able to hear back from lawyers, finance fee. So, she has a question?
We'll take a lap now, but um, yeah, I'll move on for our next meeting.
All right, permits, one oh three to Cold Road.
Yeah, so this came up as an issue, uh, resident reached out and said that there was some building on one oh three, Cold Road. It has been confirmed that there was short land permit, uh, issues as well as building permit, and they do need setbacks, so.
So?
No further.
They're all set?
Yeah, no further issue.
New cruiser radar unit.
All right. Uh, a couple of things. I had Kim put it on there, kind of dual purpose. First and foremost, I was looking to get the board's approval to purchase a new radar unit for the new cruiser. Uh, the ones we currently have, we have two newer ones. And we have two that are very old, uh, so just looking to upgrade one of those. They have multiple options out there. The one that I'd be looking to purchase is the Custom Signals RP1, which is what we have in our most recent cruiser. It fits all the needs that we have here in town. You know, it doesn't have all the bells and whistles, but a lot of the other options that are on the, uh, the more expensive units, we don't, we don't necessarily need here in town. So the cost on that, through the, through the state contract, uh, coming straight from Custom Signals, not through a third-party provider, is uh, two thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. With that said, bumps into my next question. I know when we discussed the, the new cruiser, the first go-around, uh, we discussed taking everything out of the detail fund as far as purchasing and outfitting. After reviewing my budget, looking through my budget, uh, looking to ask the board today, uh, if potentially I could pay for the outfitting and the radar out of my budget as opposed to the detail fund. Reason behind that is kind of twofold. One, I, I believe I'm gonna be fine with my budget as far as even with expending that. Two, it leaves us, instead of leaving that fund with very little amount of money in it, uh, it will leave us kind of a, a bigger footprint for the, you know, moving forward to redevelop that fund for the next purchase in a couple of years. But also, that fund can be utilized for repairs and maintenance, uh, and given that our other two cars, uh, are getting somewhat older now. They're perfectly fine right now, maintenance-wise, operational-wise, but I don't know what the future holds for them, one of those pushing a hundred thousand miles. I don't anticipate having any issues with it, but if we were, uh, that detail fund money can also be used to pay for maintenance costs on the cars. So it kind of leaves us, uh, a little bit of money in there for, for future. One, to rebuild the fund, but two, in the absence of, uh, potentially having a catastrophic failure. And it allows me to budget a little bit better on my maintenance line next year, not having to essentially try to budget for the what-ifs that might occur, so.
So maybe that's not, that is being marked, that's gotta come out of, unless the total amount of car that's gonna be used to pay, that's gonna come out of the detail fund, correct? Along with the trade-ins.
So is that probably not from detail?
No, 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 not, for the cruiser, yes. But, because it's two, it's two pieces, it's the cruiser.
The cruiser and then the outfit.
And the outfit.
So you're saying you use the detail fund for the outfit?
Use the detail fund for the purchase of the cruiser, and then taking the outfitting cost out of my budget.
So how much is the outfitting cost?
So the outfitting cost, um, with the new radar unit would be eighteen thousand nine thirty-seven. The original cost for outfitting was sixteen oh three, sixteen thousand eight hundred and three, and like I said, with the new radar unit, you'd be looking at another two thousand one hundred and thirty-four.
Behind you, you're using the budget, having it there to make the radar on that and making the detail fund.
You'll make that motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion that we move forward with using money out of your, uh, police budget to pay for the radar and the outfitting of the cruiser to come out of the detail fund.
The outfitting to come out of the detail fund?
Is that what you wanted?
No, I'd like to take that out of my budget.
Oh, okay, so all of it's coming out of your budget?
So the, the, yes.
Get the dollars out of it?
Anything outside the purchase would come out of budget, outside the actual purchase of the.
Purchase of the car will come out, your full money now, and then the rest of the money is going to come out of your budget?
Yes.
Eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-four.
All right, so I'll make that motion that the purchase of the vehicle comes out of the detail fund, with the outfitting of the, uh, vehicle comes out of the police budget. Can I say that clearly?
I'll second.
All in favor? Both?
Yes.
But then I do just have one other quick question for you guys. I know that we had, went through our, uh, I forget what you call it, as far as the electronics and whatever you disposal over at the highway department. We have some tires through the maintenance shed, uh, some are used, some are new, uh, none of which fit any of the cars that we have anymore. I am looking to, uh, get rid of those tires. Potentially, if we have a resident in town that would want them, or disposing of them, uh, as far as they go, they serve us no purpose at this point. They're very old, uh, some of them were stored or at DePriesio's, as I understand it. I went and got them from DePriesio's when I became the chief at their request, uh, and they reviewing the tires, some of them were for like the old Ford Explorers that we had back in the early two thousands, late nineties. The sizes don't fit any of the cars that we have anymore. So, just looking for your approval to either, uh, find a resident that may want those, or dispose of them.
What are the sizes?
I don't recall off the top of my head. I can, I can get the sizes, but I, I don't recall off the top of my head.
If somebody wanted to come and look at this, where are they, at the?
In the shed. That's police pocket, yeah.
So there, with, so where did you, your expression, do, do with them as you'd like?
Yes.
I'll go with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Here was comments.
No, so I have three things here. Um, garbage contract, which I'll, I guess I'll send that out to Mike, or you want to talk about that?
He said, why?
Yeah, ladies and gents, so I've got these figures from, uh, Sella. And they're looking to increase our collection for August, September, and from August to the end of the year, from eight thousand three thirty-three to what, uh, actually, for August and September, sorry. For August and September is going to be eleven thousand eight twelve thirty-three, and then for October, November, December, that looks like they were charged with twelve thousand seven fifty-eight twenty-five cents. The disposal for tonnage is, uh, going to be for August through December, a hundred and fifteen dollars per ton. So, we're looking at going from an estimated monthly cost of from fifteen thousand six eighty-three to twenty thousand four hundred and forty dollars to the left of August and September, and then for October, November, December, it's going to look like it's gonna be about twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. So, uh, remainder of the year from July to December, so it's like it's gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand seven fifty-seven, that's just an estimate, because it's based on, it's based off tonnage, so, but they just use the average and looking at, um, what they were picking up. And then, next year, the January through December, we're going into our new contract, going January and December, which is out this whole year. The collection per month would go up to fourteen thousand seven eighty-eight thirty-three cents, the disposal per tonage stays at a hundred and fifteen. So it's looking at a total monthly cost around twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirteen thousand thirty-three cents, and we can make a total of, it's all about, so total of two hundred and thirty-four thousand one thirty-three. That's going to be, based on what we have funded in this year, that is gonna be increasing above forty thousand dollars. But Mike, I do have a question, does this include, is this going to the bins?
Uh, this right now is not going to the bins until he's, he's going to set over another part, um, next week, this was the moment he begins fighting. He tries to get the bins started in January.
So, so the, all right, you got the bank, so the numbers down, January through December next year, that would include, the, the numbers, right, the bin number?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
So, I mean, so we have all the information, should we be able to listen until next week or?
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just wanted, we just wanted to break it forward because we didn't hear anything of the last thing, but, um, right, no, I think this is, we don't have any other, we don't have any other officers, so, just throwing it up here. So that's the garbage contract, uh, we got an email from, um, our attorneys. They have some old files, old, uh, legal files, they want us to know if we want to kick them out and destroy them, um.
Where'd they come? Not from the case of the beer.
She didn't say, she just said they're old files or whatever, it's just we just need to let them know if we want to keep them, and so, which I have a problem doing that on an attorney's side, to be certain, so. And, um, the last thing I had, it's, you know, second to none. Where did we stand on that infrastructure on, on road? That was a lot back, I think that was your check, that was what we had it down, I think it was, they were looking to get internet in Florida, no?
Oh, yeah.
Where do we end up on that?
I forget, I'll go back and take one, I, you know.
Okay. And, um, the last thing I had was last, last meeting, not last week, the week before, when I was asked to reach out to legal regarding the non-pub meeting we had. Based on the emails going back and forth on the show, we have to just read them. We did not have the illegal, uh, non-pub minute, uh, meeting, it was posted the way we normally do, we went into the meeting the normal way we did, um, so, the way it's ended was not correct as far as this first thing, at least in my opinion. Because the meet, the board did not make some choice to whether we wanted to seal it or not.
So at least I've been able to get an opinion on that as well, because right now we have two different opinions, so, we'll see where we're next on the front.
That's all, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
So I, are we, you lost comments, no?
Yeah.
So I got a message from, um, the zone, or I gotta do some research into it, I'm not sure who the A4 is doing.
Everything.
Okay, yeah, all right, I've gotta do some research into it, I'm gonna reach out to the after the A4, I won't hold on. So, I gotta make that up those first, and so, I got a problem with the A4 plus, but, I'll be capable until next week, but you got it.
Okay.
Oh, my awesome is, uh, the downturn, outturn for the, uh, home day, who goes to the rec for the Friday, me not for Friday get-together, so.
I just want to say a huge thank you to especially my team, because they did amazing job, and to all the departments, fire, police, highway, uh, everyone showing up. We had a great time, and we had a pretty good turnaround, it's a lot of fun.
All right, all in favor?
So on July, can you, my name, Kim? Let's check in.
You want to spell it?
No, check it.
I'll do that.
Um, on July fourteenth, and then again, at your, I believe your last meeting, you announced that it was going to be a hearing, um, to potentially have you removed as a planning board. I was just wondering if you were going to announce it all, that that had been?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Decided against?
The, we got a, in from our legal department saying that it would be, there would be no need for all the hearings, that based on the information they received, that it appeared to be mostly still happening.
So I guess my next question is, uh, I emailed the selectmen, the select board emailed several times, um, and it took over a month for a response from anyone. I reached out to several different board members, all who said that you were handling it, when I spoke with you on the fourteenth of July after the select meeting, you looked at me, assured me, and promised me that you were handling this, and you were going to keep me, um, or out of everything. To which then after five or six emails, I heard nothing. I asked very specific and detailed questions, and I still have not gotten to answer to any of them, and I was wondering if you could answer any of these.
What?
So the first question I had is that the person who filed the complaint to get it to me, filed the complaint and sent the email to you, according to the information that was finally given to me after a month, um, was, she sent it on June twenty-sixth. I was not notified of the complaint or any issue until the morning of July fourteenth. And it was only through, uh, I got a message from Roxanne letting me know, just making sure that I knew about it, and then also I got several text messages with screenshots from the person who was writing things about it on social media. That's how I found about, found out about the hearing, or the potential of the complaint than anything else. I never got a courtesy email or heads up or anything from you on the matter, after you had the information for almost two weeks. My second question, and so my question was, is why did it take so long for me to get that information? My other question was, is, you said on the fourteenth, the procedure for something like this was, the person would come before, state their complaint, state what their grievance was, and then the board would then discuss and decide if hearing was needed. You sat there and let her go on and on for about five, ten minutes, and she provided you with a very thick stack of so-called evidence that you had two weeks to review. Why was there no discussion on the fourteenth, and why did you not vote and discuss if there was or if there were, why did you unanimously, like, decide on your own that yes, it was a, a hearing? You said, okay.
I did it on my own?
No, you did, because you said, once everybody was done talking, you said, okay, it's, the next step would be a hearing. There was no discussion from anyone.
I.
I have it all, I have it all on recording too. The power of a smartphone, it's all on recording.
All of it, all of the perfeen, I was simply going by what I thought the RSA said.
So it said that you would hear the complaint? You said it, you'd hear the complaint, or you'd discuss it, and you'd decide that what of what was needed? You heard the complaint, everything she said was all civil matter.
We listened to you as well.
Huh?
We listened to you as well, I think.
Yes, but at that time, why did you not dis, and then you had information in front of you that she provided, why at that point did you not say, this is all a civil matter? Or, you had it information for two weeks prior, why did you not seek out legal counsel? Why did you wait until the middle of July, when I sent you this fifteen email? So, in that situation, the minute you got that information, it should have immediately gone up to legal, for legal counsel. That is why we do it. That is, that's why we hire, excuse me, I'm speaking.
I understand that, I'm trying to answer your questions, if you want to answer your questions, you have to give me, if you have to speak as well.
You haven't answered anything, other than excuses. So, the next question I had, that, what made you decide that hearing was needed? Based upon what she said, because like you said, you listened to the complaint, you decided the hearing is needed, and then if you feel that the hearing is needed, then you can proceed. What did she provide to you?
Based on the information there, the complaint against the elected official.
By all that, once that she provided information that justified moving forward?
I thought the information, based on the fact that our uninformation prevented, or, I was wrong.
What was it?
What was the exact, I would have to go back to him.
So there was nothing?
I'm not saying that.
And you didn't, and you?
I don't have the information, still from yet.
Why did it take you almost two months to reach out to our legal counsel?
Oh.
So, the twenty-sixth of June, she gave you all the information, you didn't get back to me from email until August thirteenth?
I don't know. If you want.
Why did it take so long to get back to me?
I was in for a scuffle, I actually.
No, don't deflect, don't deflect and put it on any other one.
I'm not inviting, I'm pretty sure I made an email.
You said to me on the fourteenth, I promise you, I'm on top of this, and I will keep in touch with you. I sent out five emails. I also requested, in an email, which is a ninety-one A, I requested all the correspondence that the board had with that person.
And you got that?
No one responded to me, it took a month. Why did it take a month?
I don't understand, I'm just.
You were the chair of this, chair of this length board. Where is the accountability for your lack of actions? Right now, this is what we call dereliction of duty. So, the next thing I'm going to say, for our public record, and please add this to the minutes, I feel as though this behavior is completely inappropriate. I feel like I'm being targeted by you, because I speak out on the budget committee, and that school board meetings against the school board, and against your wife, and I feel as though that this is retaliation. If it's not retaliation, then you're completely incompetent to be chair. And so the next thing I have to say to the rest of this selectmen is, this person is putting our town at a huge liability, because there was almost a very large lawsuit put against the town. For the stress, the, the worry that I went through, my family went through on this whole matter, the lack of, not even lack of communication, but zero communication that I got. I do all of this stuff on my own time and my own gun, and I do it because I believe it's my civic. I do all of this stuff on my own time and my own gun, and I do it because I believe it's my civic duty to stand up and help out the town in any way I can. And I was completely ghosted. And after seeing and reading his newsletter, and what he's written about people and non-public that are employees, that is wrong on every which way. And to continue to allow him to be chair, you are putting this town at a big liability. And I would encourage you guys, have a conversation, and vote, and choose a different leader, because this one is going to sink this town.
Good. Hey, I'll hold up.
I have to comment, first of all, let me ask you, my question, like, from a friend of mine, which we can be researcher, but he permits me an order. However, what I heard was, that permits were given out, during, Louis first, county first to, when he first came in, he didn't count the authority, deposit or anything, that's fine. But how do you give up permit, and take it back when it came to late?
See, then the permits were given out before...
Permits were given out, and they weren't paid for.
Alright, I'll look into it.
I'll, I'll reach out to the county, and that I was unaware of.
Yeah, he said, his comment was to somebody else, that the town permit couldn't collect it, couldn't deposit the money, so they didn't collect it. How do you give out a permit without collecting the money? Collect it, you put it in the, in a secure place, and hold it until you can, have the right to deposit it.
Good.
My second thing, what's going on with, um, four twenty-seventh of the street, with the guy trying to break through on paper road coming into, um, Joy Drive? I've seen the dump trucks out there, and they're putting a gate up.
Do you want me to speak to her?
Yeah. So that's a matter that the, uh, the forest rangers have been involved with, uh, sort of dealing with the forest rangers, they're rather busy, uh, she should come back to me, uh, and at this point, we, I'm going to handle it.
Okay, 'cause I've seen towns dump trucks going up there for the sand. We just assumed that they were trying to burn off or something, yeah, so that he couldn't get a problem?
No, they were, they were actually, I know the highway department was over there doing some, uh, coloring.
They were working on Lincoln.
Yeah.
Yeah, today.
Last week, they were really, was getting really busy.
I worked out much, yeah.
There shouldn't be anybody accessing through there, I've already spoken with the walkers and everybody else, and the situation itself is, uh, still the investigating stages, but I'm handling it, and the forest rangers are guiding and assisting if they, uh, if they can. Unfortunately, they're just rather busy, and it would take a little bit longer for them to address it, so I spoke with them, decided to carry myself.
I just want to steal this. You've been coming down, 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 down.
I did speak to Jeff, the property owner down there as well, uh, he did not give the permission to go through there. He was at work one night.
They really questioned me then, you know?
Yeah.
But, um, I didn't think he did either.
Yeah, he did nothing. So he was, he actually called Jerry, wanted to know why they had come, Jerry was the president of the association, over on our side of the, who doesn't know if Jerry is, who she is. Um, President McCarver, who we should have, and father, like, the father. That was a, that was a Friday night, he did reach out, I reached out to him on Sunday to figure out what was going on. I talked to him on Monday, and, uh, he was upset that they went through his yard and stuff. Uh, I did, I did tell him to write an email to the local selectmen that he did not give authorization, just so it's written down, and, you know, a couple of towns.
The other thing is, he's got a dam on that property too. And I don't know if it's still proper going on, which would create problems, uh, the water coming from the sun is like, that little stream, because he has to go through his property. And dam further to make it cheaper.
So I've made it all the way up, I've, I've actually driven in the four twenty-seven all the way up to where it's, I didn't see anything that was disturbed or water.
Okay.
Um, that's what I'm saying, that since I haven't been out there in a couple of weeks, maybe, I think there was a couple of weeks.
Uh, the last time you were out there, from there, pretty much none.
Yeah, so, um, I didn't see anything disturbed, water.
The reason I ask that, because of that last winter, he called me, wanted to know if he would maintain his dam, because he would tend to care a lot of him.
Yeah.
And he said he called me in the spring, and he never did, and then I hear all this stuff going on, and he's pulling off over there, and I said, well, now what's going on with the dam, you know? And it is a registered dam. How do we do that? We have nothing.
You have something?
Me, yes, I do. Um, you?
Can we have your name?
Oh, my name, yeah, my name's Zach.
Zach?
Um, I just have a couple things I want to do.
That was lovely.
Peterson?
Just, I'm an X, X.
Yeah, it's my first meeting, but I have a couple things I wanted to bring up. I don't know whether I should bring off for you, or is this something I just like to say one, and talk about the options or?
Sure, let's start with that.
Alright, well, the first one I wanted to bring up is the, um, the idea of implementation of excessive noise regulation.
If my quiet hours from nine, uh, nine P M to six A M, used to start with this, um, this would include anything from excessive noise, loud music, machinery, uh, maybe starting makers, um, and those that, you know, town, if they have, and this says anything about, uh, noise issues or anything. I have a family, I have a three-month-old, trying to keep things not excessively loud, I mean, even if it was ten P M, that's acceptable, but like, between nine and six A M, excessive noise, very concerned, um, yeah.
Uh, where, where do you let, you want me to ask?
I'm not comfortable saying I dress publicly, my wife hasn't protected, or someone.
Wrong.
So, I hate being so discreet. Yeah, I think, um, yeah, I think everything else is bad, is it?
So, alright, so, you're questioning all the excessive noise, where is the proposal?
Like, do I, I could, I'd be happy about to have something, and you would be able to knock, I just don't know.
So, the process would be, was that if you were looking to change that, then that would be a warrant, article? So you would have to have some draft, is?
No, no, it would be a town policy.
Okay.
So, it would be a matter of, probably give it to the board, and then the board reviewing it, and then, and what's discussed again, same issue.
Roxanne, I believe there is a town policy on the ways.
I can take a look.
I'm almost positive, because I had this issue years ago.
They're raised, but it's very specific to...
Like, your shop chain, or?
It's very specific to motor vehicles, mufflers, things like that.
So you're thinking that, so if you want to draft something, that's right to the board?
Is there a specific, or is it just, like, you can, that number or something?
We can take a look at the one that's out there, and we can probably expand on that, potentially, you know, at least to mend it.
I, I believe the one that's out there now, it's for like the weekends, which I think they consider like Friday through Sunday, I think that those until like eleven, and then, I think there for weekend, it's like ten. If I remember correctly, this is going back like ten or eleven years ago, I had an issue with, right, with it. I had a question in the police officer, police sergeant, I'm trying to look at what it was. So it might either be that the selectman officer down here, or, or, so you have a copy?
Well, there's books involved.
The next thing, why is, I just want to make sure I understand it correctly, is it, I guess it's good that you're here, is it correct that there's only, like, that, but there's, there's times when there's not a police officer, but just specifically the middle ten, or leading on state troopers somewhere?
Correct.
And, is it, there's only two officers, per, per yourself and one other officer?
Uh, well, we have part-time and full-time. Currently, we have three, uh, staff right now, and we're probably a background.
Okay, so we are adding an additional?
We're, we're, we have another part-time, we're a background, and we have a full-time over the days.
Alright, I guess my next thing would be, if it was that, you explore on what you'll take, to be able to have like an office ground at all times, so that we're not in a place where we're having to lean on state. I don't know what that means, different now, like, I don't know what that would take, but either way, but I feel like our town should have a police officer, have their own on at all times, and not have a totally non-state troopers necessarily. I don't really like the idea of, again, I said, I jumped the border against someone, or any, and, um, I think having a police officer able to respond to my town, and make me feel, my family feel a safer.
So, if I could just say, besides the scale of having committed, around, and I can tell you it was thought around, and, when around state, there is a shortage of available police officers, because of the number of, in fact, Scott, I have smart Asian. So, I thought that we're not looking for this old, these, our, or, these officers? We'd love to, to have to rely on state police, uh, all the time, but...
No, and this isn't like, I'm trying to, either.
No, no, so, yeah.
It wasn't in the budget, or if it was something that, like, you didn't propose to, like, I don't know. I pay like, under my taxes to do that.
Under our, like, under our current budget, it doesn't allow us to cover seven days over twenty-four hours. It does allow us to provide coverage seven days a week, from early morning hours until late evening hours, uh, but it doesn't allow us, the current budget does not allow us to wait for seven.
And I guess that, propose that the board, they explore the idea, is that the spending, at least a budget, is that after twenty-four hours, a day, seven days a week?
Tax cap of two percent in town?
Uh.
We have a tax cap of two percent in town, might be better to get a petition warrant article if you, if that's something you're interested in. Push it through.
Yeah.
Enough, people can vote on it.
So, you want to increase the tax gap, or?
Not to, or you could just increase the PD budget. Going full-time, twenty-four, seven, would be astronomically increasing their budget, because we're doing it. Unless you would, or...
Which would, so if I would have that taken?
So you think, um, write up a petition warrant article, you'd make twenty-five signatures from registered voters in town, and then that would get along about?
That wouldn't be until March?
Yeah.
Just, that's how the process works.
So, we have to have twenty-five signatures for March?
Well, you have to have it before, like, uh, I don't know, I'm talking to my ex, like, January sometime, I think, January. It's, it's, uh, maybe end of January, instead of, right? And then what happens is, as long as, if you have enough signatures, it'll go on the ballot to be, uh, it would go in the book, actually, to be voted on. At town meeting.
Or you can raise a proposal for it, at town meeting, there's several different ways to do it.
Raise a proposal for it?
Yeah, so when, so when we're discussing, so when we're discussing that warrant article, say, just do the example, the warrant article says a hundred thousand dollars for police, you could stand up and say, I'm going to motion to amend that, but I went out to London, paid twenty-five thousand, or something, I'm just, use that for example. You can do it then, but go, for us going into the budget, we can only increase the budget two per, no more than two percent. And the other budget that's only, it's one, around one point eight million, so we're talking like thirty-six thousand dollars, it would mostly increase our budget for the next year. As you, for the garbage, yeah, and you heard, the garbage is going up forty, like, thirty, forty thousand, so we're going to be scratching our heads on that. But then, there's a process, and there's several, if you're interested, you can do an individual article, or you can actually amend that, amend an existing article that we typically do every year for the budget, for police, I don't think that's the, or, or not.
I guess, there's a one, there's a point of contact, and I'm not, I'm, if I like, run this by outside of, just being, just...
Well, if you're looking for, people to please, like, purely be able to please, right? So, might be probably the first part.
But if he wants, he can do it from town meeting, yeah, but if I'm going to raise it, he's going to be a registered voter. Thanks, Jay.
Um, can I just add one other thing, uh, that I also wanted to bring up? Even though, like, high fire, like, issues that are happening in the state right now, or, I guess, the, in the fire restriction during times of high fire risk, um, I don't know, I have, I try to use around my property, concerning the fire risks, um, so I got...
There shouldn't be any fireworks going off right now.
What?
There shouldn't be any fireworks going off right now.
Uh, really? Is that like, the word you're throwing?
Uh, I don't know, we, we just want to do this, do, uh, you could set a fire, there's no fire in the neighborhood.
There's towns that are painting fires in general, like, you have a fire pit, like, if someone's watching fires.
Sorry, so we haven't gotten anything, or I haven't gotten anything from the fire chief asking us to put anything out there yet. Maybe, you know, I, we, I was, we're asking if there's, like, any fireworks in the waters to say, hey, you know, reservation for fireworks, but, if, or, if you have existing fireworks, like, contained, you know?
You can put on multiple, but we don't have a state of any existing, and no new ones would be, I'm sorry about that.
I'll reach out to the fire chief, I believe, that's, I'll reach out to him as well.
No, I was just going to say, I can say that, of course, it'll be here, we did respond to multiple fire pits, fire pump.
So, so they were saying, fire park, saying you couldn't have burned?
There, there was no burning, so we were responding, even if they were in a fire pit, we were responding with, you know, it was being put out, like, extinguishing.
But then considering that, you're saying fireworks shouldn't have, did any, or?
We'll, uh, we'll let the, the phone check it out. I know a couple times around here, they have on their, the wood sign out front, that there's no fires, no fireworks, or anything like that, so. Our fire chief, I work on the fire park, so our fire chief may have a little qualms.
I'll reach out, and we'll get something, whatever comes up, you know, with most of the ones.
I guess, right now, we're in, in ordinance, comparing that, or, just being more discretionary, fire park, to put out, or?
I don't think we have any, we don't have any existing ordinance, so.
I guess, if we find that there is any, and also propose we explore the idea of, that being something.
The ordinance for, for fires.
If there's like a high fire risk, then fireworks, be prohibited.
Which would be determined price, and I get that, so then it would ultimately go back to the fire chief, so, you know, it's, put in the ordinance, but then there's likely one issues, and then where we can just have, just like, issue straight from there. That's it, not all.
That's all I got. Anybody else? Good?
With your contract with Traps, they figure out what's going, and what rights, what's going to be against?
I haven't heard anything, you know? I know, I know when Tony said last time, he knows of all the response, he did say something briefly, but I don't want to repeat what he said, that it wasn't, yeah.
I used to watch Call Country, no, Call Country, every time it comes out, but, 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 there's no...
Tony's original date to get us the bid was October, it's been pushed back to May, or, he's well aware of that, and he knows that we want to talk to him about that before.
I had a tough question last week, both, it's a lot, we're going to be researched, uh, my national book director, is there a rough shade, or a figure with that man?
So, I, I talked to Dan, I don't know, till the A4 talked to Dan about it, um, it is down the shed right now, he said it's a rough shade. I am physically put eyes on it, I'm wanting to get down there this week, I just didn't have the time to get down there, but, tracing my, or something, which is...
I heard you possibly could push out today.
Put it off of the...
So, so, they're trying to put it on the bid, yeah, which we're not going to have a grade. So we're going to spread it out, or the, and we just pick up the bucket. That, that just doesn't seem to make sense. I left the grade, it's fine, it's quite affordable, thirty thousand dollars, available, period, ten years, it's cheaper than anything. My next question is, is there an operator, or is it not an operator? It's not, how do I have to get it to go? Look at the job description, it's all in there.
Is written everywhere, you think, that they're...
He offered to ditch, you know, did any ditch work, no, right, when you're done, go down, that they did. Look at us, that's the way us are useful too. We don't have a greater, you don't have an operator, or what it is, but, from one aspect, there's no doubt about it. And new question I have is, whether we decide to [inaudible]. We're going to [inaudible] or something else, we're going to have?
What's the question?
The brush more.
Did you, a brush arm or a brush guy?
What he signs next.
Yep.
Is that for what, me for a month?
I think it's probably.
You know, how much?
Four thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars.
I know, it's a month for [inaudible]. You got shut down in 2020 by five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars that you own today. If I wasn't criticized that week for 20 minutes. My [inaudible] people are trying to buy this though, they're trying to save this thing right now. One of the board members. And I'm not, I'm going to get the meeting minutes and look at the video of 2020. Mr. Genius, if we didn't ever need one of those. You can cut it by hand in one. You can chip it, but chip you rent [inaudible]. Never need to buy a chip reed. We don't need chipper. I don't see anything to [inaudible]. And what they did do with that brush off, they put on this whole challenge of that. I did that [inaudible]. It broke a [inaudible]. It happened to me four years [inaudible]. Now we're about six years behind. It has to be [inaudible]. Only one [inaudible]. I just don't know how things changed so much in four years. I'm like [inaudible] bodies that can do the job. I would estimate when I was there. The only thing that's changed is the employees. We were asking a lot. I don't, I don't see keep track of each employee what they do per week. Like I asked you. None of this [inaudible]. We did this, we did that. The school did what? And we'll see who's doing what and who's not doing what. Never trust that [inaudible]. I would like the answer to the question I had more than it's just jump.
I just wanted to say, as for anything for like the graders or anything like that that helps clear or fix the roads, the dirt roads especially. Uh, I can say in the past four or five years, I see the road crew coming up and down my, my road, which I'm [inaudible]. Uh, a few times a week, they come by. Honestly. And I can, I can, I can tell you this, when you were, when I first moved here 12 years ago, I would see your crew maybe once or twice during this season. I see these guys several times a week. And the reason, simple reason is this, Rick. The population in my neighborhood is like more than doubled year-round. My neighborhood has gone from maybe like, it was like twenty-five percent of [inaudible] to now it's like sixty or seventy percent [inaudible]. So those roads are constantly being used and they're happily being used. So those guys are out constantly. And I don't say this for a fact because I see them all the time out there clearing the roads and fixing the roads and clearing the roads. Because my road gets washed up all the time. So it's being used constantly, which is why it's wired up.
Comments you'd be made to the chair.
Yeah, thank you.
The reason that they're there so many times is because you don't cut the [inaudible] road, it's gonna come back every single time. I can show you that as proof. My road was like two weeks ago, last Thursday. The budget [inaudible]. With [inaudible]. No calcium. The holes were bad the next day. It come down now, hit calcium and the holes are bad. And the [inaudible]. Cutting both up the [inaudible]. We always did. That's why you can see us a lot, but they didn't get that.
Right.
That's, that's what it was for. So there's an answer for that.
We're troubled.
Next, and what?
So I'd like to ask a question. So has our number of people in this town increased that much? Fifty to seventy-five percent more people? What is the census in this town now? It was eighteen hundred, what is it now? Twenty-five, thirty?
So it wasn't this town, is it?
I can ask you, Christine, you're not, you're not [inaudible].
All right, guys, all right. Right, so [inaudible]. We can look into, but the population changed.
So if you can look into the population, you can look into the [inaudible] in the neighborhood of the, in Sunrise Lake [inaudible]. Area. And it's not a matter of, it is the usage. So there's more year-round people there.
Back on the greatest subject. It's like the chief, he has been able to evaluate to find out what was wrong with this stuff. Why don't we have somebody come in and evaluate what's the matter? What is so wrong with the [inaudible]? The [inaudible] is a valuable part of every town to basically do their [inaudible]. It should be done with [inaudible]. But why can't we have somebody come in and evaluate the [inaudible]? Find out actually what is really wrong with it. I mean, basically, the only thing that's wrong with it is maybe the tires for our [inaudible]. Just sitting there. But again, it has never been used really since Rick left. And he used, he used to use it all the time, he'd be lying, yelling all the other roads. I, I suggest we get a company to come in. And this is a company actually right now, a guy started a new company. Cessla, Livy's. Livy's equipment, repair and stuff. He's got the vehicle, he goes on squad, checks them out, there's a whole bunch of companies like that around. And have somebody just come down, check it up and find out exactly what's wrong. It probably needs fluids changed and stuff. But I mean, other than that, that [inaudible]. [inaudible] is never [inaudible].
You would definitely look into? All right. Any further comments? Be none.
I'll make a motion to [inaudible].
I'll step in if you choose.
The favors?
Thanks.
Okay, we're here.